We'll call our meeting to order. Um, we do have one person who wishes to speak, so let me. Let me read our spiel that we give for anyone who's interested in speaking. The public comments period is an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the board. There are some rules to follow when addressing the board. Please be civil and respectful of everyone during the comment period. We want to give everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so within the published timeframe. Your time will be limited to three minutes. This is your time and cannot be used by anyone else. Please speak directly to the chair of the board and not addressing any specific board member. If you wish to speak, please offer new information and do not repeat the same information from a previous speaker. At the end of your three minutes, we will go on to the next presenter. The board is here to listen to your comments and each board member will take your comments under advisement when making decisions. Thank you. So our first presenter tonight is Whitney Carlisle.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right, ready? Okay, I am a mom of four and member of the community of Smithville. I am asking you, the Clay County Health Department Board, to review your quarantine policy. Under Misha guidelines, our athletic departments must follow our county's health department guidelines, not just mandates. Failure to do so would result in a forfeit for a team. We have a football team this year with extremely high goals, and we do not want anything that would put all the hard work and sacrifice made by our athletes at risk. After a year and a half and a half of COVID data and other measures being looked at in our community, our board voted last night for a gating criteria to be enforced starting in November. This means masks will be optional if our numbers stay at an approved rate. This is what our community and school board believes is best for our students and families. I would like to see the wording in your guidelines to schools change quarantine policies to be up to each individual school district. Clay County serves a number of school districts with various needs and situations specific to them. By leaving policies to the districts, they will know what to put in place for their individual students. Again, mission rules, however, are allowing the county health department's recommendations to trump our local school board's decisions. You are a health department with a focus also on mental health. I'm sure you can imagine what a forfeit during the postseason would do to a student athlete. This would be devastating. Please change your quarantine policy to simply state that each school district can decide what policy to put in place based on their needs. All school districts are fully capable to look to other resources for what guidelines they should base their policies on. Please allow local communities to decide what is best for the students they know, interact with, and serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. All right. No other, no other presenters, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. There's no monthly education session, so we will go on to the treasurer's report.
You got, you got to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public comment period. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right, Gary, are you doing the treasurer's report for Courtney?
I am, thank you. So you have a copy of the treasurer's report that was sent to you. I'll just turn your attention to the statement of revenues and expenditures, combined income statement, which is page four, and the current period actual month. So our revenue this month, including total contracts, environmental taxes, et cetera, three sixty-seven, nine twenty-three, sixty-eight. And our current period actual expenditures for the same period was five thirty-two, one twenty-one, fifteen. So for the current actual year, the total expenses are, pardon me, six nine seventy-five, nine twenty-one, sixty-six. And the total revenues to date are seven point two eight zero, seven oh eight point five one. And we still have October and November and December for those revenues and expenditures to occur typically. Revenues weighing significantly in the last three months of the year, as you guys know. So that's the income statement of revenues and expenditure summary. And then if you'll go down to the very bottom where you'll see our schedule of investments, we have one investment to redeem and to therefore for you all to vote on. So that's pretty much it on the revenue expenditure side of things in the financial report. Nothing really outstanding or concerning to report at this time.
Any questions on the treasurer's report?
Gary, is it typical then, it looks like seventy-nine percent of the overall budget has been allocated or spent? Is that, that's typical, right?
Yes.
We're on par?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I need a motion then to accept the financial statement for September 2021.
Let's so move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the September 2021 financial statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I need a motion to accept the September 2021 scheduled investments.
Motion to approve the schedule of investments.
I'll second.
Dr. Purdum.
Right. Motion and a second to accept the September 2021 schedule of investments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I would motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, new business. Gary, are you doing the first one? The emergency reserves, okay.
Yes, so also in your packet was the COVID expenses spreadsheet so far. And if you'll go to the bottom of the first page, you will see on the far right column, which of September accumulated expense to emergency reserves. So we have spent one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents out of the emergency reserve fund to offset the costs associated with responding to the pandemic. And so I will also tell you that we have placed a request, we filled out the forms to the county commission for ARPA, American Recovery Plan, funding specific to COVID expenditures. And we submitted that, was that, that was two weeks ago, right, Daryl?
It was more than that because they had the work session and then they had the other session, so probably about three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. Yeah, and so, so we've submitted that to them. So that particular process is in a holding pattern until they make a decision. And so, and so that goes actually through 2023 for that funding. And so we've submitted a budget for each of those three years for their consideration. So just want you to know, we're continuing to look at as many funding alternatives as we can in order to not keep spending emergency funding. But having said that, there's been no decision regarding the ARPA funds from them. And so I'm therefore requesting, excuse me, a continuation for this month for COVID expenses.
You haven't had any indication as to when they'll make a decision on that or what their process is going to be?
No, we apparently were the first entity to submit an application to them for funding. So they were, they're going to use another, I believe, use another business session to have conversations about that and any other applications that may be coming to them for the ARPA funds. And so they did not get a timeframe or timeline as to when any decision would be made.
Okay, okay, well, all we can do is stay on top of it.
Yeah, which we will.
Going forward, is there, you know, we, the FDA is going to be looking at that Pfizer request to expand vaccination for ages five to eleven next week. So I'm guessing probably that's gonna, the data looks pretty good, and I think that's probably gonna go through both FDA and CDC. Do we anticipate any additional costs with having to do immunization clinics around that, mass immunization clinics for this? I know we haven't had a big uptake in terms of teens, but we've had, I've seen significant numbers of teens getting their vaccine. What, what's our plan going forward? And obviously that's going to take money, right? So that's why, yeah.
That's correct. And we've actually, this week, we already ordered our first batch of Pfizer vaccine for five to eleven-year-olds. So we've already got our order in the pipeline for that when that approval comes, which will probably be within the next fourteen days, I would imagine. And so, yes, staff have already been planning for that. And yes, that will add additional costs. We're still vaccinating some folks for the first time. We're also vaccinating now for boosters. And then, once this age group becomes eligible, we anticipate that, yes, we will be vaccinating a number of kids in that age category as well. So staff have already been planning and working on this actually for quite a while, anticipating. There won't be, there are no plans currently for a mass vaccination clinic. So the vaccine is widely available and has been distributed throughout all of our communities. I think there, within ten-mile radius of the health department, there are between thirty and thirty-five opportunities for people to get vaccinated. Cory has reached out to pediatric practices, and she's working with, I think she said at least two, to get them set up so that they can provide those vaccinations in their clinics, which would be huge, actually. So, so yeah, that's all in the works.
Okay.
And I have a question about the, so along the same lines with Dr. Purdum. The heart, it's my understanding you guys have contracted with Heart to Heart International to provide vaccine clinics throughout the county through the end of December, and then they are not choosing to re-up their, their contract after December 31st. Is that right?
Um, I'll have to double check on that. We've been having further discussions about that continuing. But their initial discussions with us about that was, yes, they were not going to continue to go forward. But that might change, and so, so fingers crossed on that one because they've been a great partner and they allowed us to actually go out into every, every single community multiple times throughout these last few months and provide additional clinics right there in the neighborhoods and et cetera. So I'm hopeful that that will change, but they're having, it's my understanding that, like all other health entities, they're now having staffing issues. And so they're having to reevaluate where they're at. But so I guess stay tuned for that, Kathy.
Okay, I guess my question too surrounding that is the contract you guys have with them, have you, are you paying as you go? Or have you already, is that, has that been a prepaid service to where they're just, no, Daryl says, so you're paying as they're scheduled? Then it's per person or whatever, and then, okay.
Correct, yeah, so it's a, it's a per person, and if they, we don't meet a certain threshold for their, their cost of doing business that day, we pay their cost of doing business. So for the most part, well, we try to do the best we can on getting those scheduled, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know if there was an opportunity there, if it was prepaid, to just open the doors wide up and into anticipation of the pediatric population and really boost up our county, you know, with the, with availability that way. But yeah, I wasn't sure.
Any other questions? All right, so Gary has requested then for us to continue the emergency, the ability for him to use emergency reserve funding for COVID activities. So I need a motion that would be for thirty, that would be until the next meeting so that we would review that again.
Make a motion to authorize the use of emergency reserve funds for COVID activities for the stated time.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second then to continue the emergent, use of emergency reserve funding for COVID activities. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one, sorry. Question, I'm sorry, just one other question. Do you know, Gary or Daryl, the approximate percentage that we have left in emergency reserves? Like percentage of, what is it? You keep three months of, in three months of, or out, outflow in, or what?
So as I reported earlier, we've only expended one hundred and thirty-nine thousand out of the, the fund that was approved by the board for the current budget year. So I'd have to, I'd have to get my calculator out and do the math on that. But it's well over ninety percent is still left.
Yeah, great, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, or is the percentage in numbers, okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, who's, Daryl, are you presenting the holiday schedule?
Uh, sure. Up here. All right, can you see that, okay?
Yep.
All right, so we have two, so we have two things, and I think I mentioned them both last month. So one is a little bit of a correction for our holiday schedule this year. And one is Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And so initially, what we end up doing it when we schedule our holidays is, you know, if it's on a, if the holiday is on a Thursday, or on a, I'm sorry, on a Saturday, then we have the observed holiday for us on the Friday. And so things just got a little out of whack. And so since we observe both Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, we had it on a Friday and a Monday, and we need to bump it to a Thursday and a Friday. So our observed Christmas Eve would be that Thursday, even though it's a couple of days out. And then, and then the Christmas Day would be observed on that Friday. So we're asking for that correction, just a little bit of cleanup on our end from last year's holiday schedule. And then the other proposed holiday portion was to add Juneteenth. That was a federal holiday, became a federal holiday in 2021. And so we had a little bit of discussion last month on that as well. There were some options presented there. So this is what was brought forward for the proposal, the official proposal this month to add Juneteenth on, actually observed on June 20th, because I believe it's June 19th is when, the actual Juneteenth day is.
And this is from the committee that reviewed the holidays, correct?
Yes, yep.
Any questions, discussion?
Do we have any duty that we have to hold to this, the patterns of the rest of the, like the city of Liberty holiday numbers, like how many holiday, how many days? I'm guessing thirteen is above what the rest of the county gets, or do we have to hold to any of that? Or can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, so the discretion for that is completely up to the board of health as an independent unit of local government. So I have no idea what the other cities might be doing, Kathy. And so it's totally your discretion as to when, how many days.
And what was the discussion a little bit on the committee as far as adding a day rather than swapping it out for something? I know you guys were looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there was some, some discussion of even either swapping it out with Columbus Day. If you guys wanted to hold it to twelve holidays, which would be understandable. Obviously, I think for adding the, the holiday, you know, it helps on the HR practices too. Maybe helps with recruiting your retention and things like that. It is, it is an extra holiday throughout the year, so that is something to definitely consider. But I think just when it came down to it, it was, you know, the committee would just like to add Juneteenth to it.
Okay.
But that is completely up to your discretion.
What's the financial impact of adding that?
Um, financially, I mean, it, everything, all of the days are budgeted. So I mean, it would not be a working day, but it wouldn't impact our budget at all.
I would be in favor of adding the Juneteenth and then continuing the Columbus Day. I presume that many of the employees have children and might be off school that day. I think it's important to keep the family unit together. So I would like to keep the ones that we have, and I understand the rationale for adding the Juneteenth.
Any other discussion, any other questions?
I guess from an employee retention and recruitment vantage point, I agree on that as well with Dr. Gates's comments.
Okay. Sounds like everyone's agreeable with that. Need a motion then to accept the 2022 holiday schedule as presented?
Let's so move.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
I can't see who's motioning with this up on the board, I'm sorry.
Oh. Dr. Purdum motioned.
I motioned.
Made the motion.
Okay, Dr. Purdum motioned and who seconded, I'm sorry.
Dr. Gates.
Dr. Ritz.
Did you get that, okay? All right, I have a motion then to accept the 2022 holiday schedule as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, strategic plan review, third quarter.
Okay, so, okay. I'm going to attempt to share a screen here, so hold on. I can find it. There we go, do you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, awesome. So this is the third quarter governance scorecard. And as you know, pardon me, as you know, excuse me. As you know, we provide this report on a quarterly basis to keep the board informed of our plan, our progress on our strategic plan, which by the way, will end in 2022. And we are, we will probably around April or May of next year will begin to move that process forward with the development of a new strategic plan. We've got the, the CHAW is fully engaged right now, and we expect that to be completed by December of this year. And then immediately following that, the CHIP will be developed. And so we're anticipating by April or May that we will have a really good handle on what the CHIP initiatives are going to be. And that will be incredibly informative to our strategic plan development for our new strategic plan. So that's kind of the timeframe, I just wanted to point that out, that, how that will roll out. So you've got the plan in your packet, I have it up on the screen. And as I scroll through, I'm obviously not going to read every single one. But you can, as you probably already observed, most of our strategic initiatives are on target or green. We do have some in yellow, and we do have a couple in blue. One in blue that I wanted to point out is that the STD program has really done a great job of increasing their capacity and ability to test people in clinics. And so we're actually ahead of our target for the plan in that ages fifteen to twenty-four-year-old category for STD testing. So kudos to staff for, for doing a great job. In the environmental health area, we did have an increase in risk factor violations this past quarter, after going from exceeding where we were actually less, which is a good thing in this case, we actually went a little bit above. And you can see in the progress comments, the rationale behind that. So not really too worried about that. But did want to point out that, that is a, now in yellow and a caution. Then another caution was in the disease investigation area. We have, we're pretty much at our target on all the other communicable diseases. But because of the significant presence of COVID in all of our communities, we're, we're behind on those disease investigations. Although I will tell you that I just got an email about, what time is it, six thirty, about an hour ago, hour and a half ago, that, from the Epi staff, that they are now caught up so, to the fourteen-day period. So we should see this number significantly improve, and then we should be back in the green unless something, of course, which we don't know, unless something significant happens in the way of COVID increase in the next three months. significant happens in, in the way of COVID increase in the next three months. I think there was, I thought there was one more. Nope, that was it. So I would be happy to answer any, any questions about that. But overall, we're doing really, really well, which is amazing. Credit to our, our fantastic staff despite everything going on with COVID. You know, everything else in our world still continues every day and they're just doing a great job. And it's evidenced by looking at this report. So I'm very, very proud of them for, for all the hard work that they're continuing to do on top of everything that we have and trying to manage this pandemic. So that's kind of the summary on the governance scorecard. As you know, also this is a requirement for our accreditation. And so you will need to place this on file. So I will stop sharing if there are no questions.
Okay. You want us to place it on file by accepting that into the minutes?
Yes, correct.
Any questions for Gary then about the strategic plan review? Gary's staff have really done a great job keeping everything up besides having COVID and, and all of the all of the things they've had to concentrate on. So very directly with COVID, they haven't let everything, you know, fall behind as much as, as as they could have. So they really have done a good job and you need to tell them, you know, that we really appreciate that. That also is something that should be really highlighted to our accrediting agency when we get to that point because we need to be able to show them how we were able to keep up as much as possible and, and that the quality of the staff that we have in doing that, you know, really is something that we're proud of for the Health Department.
Yep, will do. Good point.
All right. I need a motion then to accept the strategic plan review for the third quarter.
I move that we accept that strategic plan review for the third quarter.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Daryl, you're up.
All right, I'm going to share my screen now. Okay, is it popping up here for you?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to highlight the social media. I know the numbers are down a little bit, but that's been to be expected. You know, back in January, January, we were hitting really high on, on Facebook and Twitter and, you know, a lot of the, the tapering off has been due to, you know, less COVID information and things like that. So it's definitely to be expected. But still, definitely, excuse me, definitely higher than any other years in the past. So Kelsey's doing a great job maintaining that and with the communication to the public. So I'm going to go down to, let's see, page four. So as part of our HIPAA risk assessment, HIPAA work plan, I'm sorry, we completed the key inventory project. And so that's something that, that Roy and some other of our staff worked really hard on. So we got a key box and, and did an inventory of all of our keys and to make sure just, we had an account for where all the keys were, maybe some locks that needed to be replaced with new keys and, and things like that. So definitely that was a long-term goal. That's been part of our HIPAA work plan for quite a while. Again, one of the things that COVID got in the way of to, to get that taken care of. Another one is our HVAC maintenance and service RFP. So that was released. We got responses back. We didn't quite get some of the responses that we had anticipated. So we're working on extending that one more month. We thought we may have that on the agenda this month, but it looks like it's hoping, hoping we can get that on the agenda next month for you all. And that would just be our maintenance and service plan. And we're also looking to look at the automated controls, the control system. And that's one of our really potentially higher-priced items that could come out of the capital renewal fund when that is made. There, there's a wide variety on, on what the scope of some of those automated building controls would entail. And just the one that runs our building right now, again, it was original to the building. It's just, doesn't have any updates to it. So it's, it's definitely outdated and it's, and it's really challenging to, to make some changes. So that'll, that's to be determined on that one. So hopefully we'll have a proposal for you all next month. Another thing for cybersecurity. So we renewed our cybersecurity policy. And one of the, one of the requirements of the cybersecurity policy was to up our multi-factor authentication options across the IT program. And so some of that has been implemented already and it's continuing to be rolled out. So what that means is, you know, just like, you know, working from home here, right now we have it on an every 14-day schedule. So to get onto the system, whether that's Outlook or Teams, you have to have multi-factor authentication. So we've, we've now placed our phone number into the system every 14 days now for us. We will then have to do the multi-factor authentication. So we'll need to, our phone will ring, we'll have to authenticate that as us through the phone and then it will give us access for another 14 days. So just one of those things for our cybersecurity policy. They want to make sure that we're protecting health information and doing all of the security needs that we need to on our front. So we've implemented that. Vital records revenue, I've told you that, you know, we're ahead of schedule on that. We've already met our budgeted revenue for that, actually over our budgeted revenue for the year. So we're going to project that out a little bit higher for 2022. But we're definitely doing a great job in that. We've got a couple more months, a few more months of, of revenue to come in for that. So you'll see that at the end of the year. Our revenue will be up quite a bit. We're averaging well over $20,000 a month on vital records revenue. On page six, so Health Equity Subcommittee. So our Health Equity Committee is doing a lot of great work. You know, we're trying to grow it and trying to, to adapt and change the best that we can. So one of the things that we're doing, they're, they're continuing to focus on LGBTQ plus health equity. And then so we did the healthcare bill of rights. So the senior leadership, we, we took a look at it. The committee was working on it. They did a lot of great work on it. So we ended up adopting that. And so there's the list of, of all of the things that it entails. So really just trying to do more and more on health equity across not only our organization, but then roll that out into, into the community. So definitely doing a lot of great work there. Going down to page seven. We have continued to do work on a community health assessment. So the local public health system assessment, the 10 essential public health services. So had some face-to-face meetings there. And then also we've got a lot of the surveys out. I know this number is a lot higher announced, but there was 1,500 respondents. The team's doing a lot of work actually sending out more actual paper surveys. These, these have mostly been electronic. So identified some communities and some addresses that, that you know, we're wanting to get into some underserved communities a little bit more. Our numbers were low on that. So really looking at the needs of those that need it most, really trying to get more information back that way. So sending out some paper surveys. Hopefully we'll get quite a few of those back and we'll include those in our, in our perception survey.
Hey, Daryl, before you go off of that one, I just want to point out to the board that so far, and we've extended the, the timeframes for getting input from our communities. But this go-around, it's about, we're, we're already received about 20% more surveys to date than we did in our previous CHAW three years ago. So that's a pretty, pretty good improvement. And like I said, we've still got several weeks to go. And this mass mailing should be hopefully, we're fingers are crossed for it to be fairly prolific for us in, in terms of getting responses, but we'll see. We've incentivized that as well. So you know, hopefully those incentives will entice folks to, to participate in the survey. So I just wanted to add that, or on that, so.
Yep. Right, I'm going to jump to page, where did it go? Coming up on environmental health. So it is going to be page 12. And so these two, can't get them both on the same screen or can a little bit here. But so the food inspections, definitely, you know, getting caught up on, on all the food inspections. But I do want to look, take a look at, you know, we're, we're at a high level of inspections here. But then our priority violations are actually lower than, than, to be expected actually. So that's really a good sign. And so what that means is I think our education, you know, we've seen a drop in, in those priority violations over the last couple of months. I think it's, we're really starting to get, you know, every, all of the food workers back in the swing of things. Getting the education levels back up where they need to be on that front. And so this just shows that, you know, the food safety in, in the restaurants around the county is, is, you know, those, those workers are doing a really good job on that. You know, if we're seeing a month, a month decline on the actual violations, even though our inspection numbers are going up, that's a really good sign. So doing a lot of good work there. Go down to. Yeah, just our highlights. So still our staff on, on the COVID vaccinations, you know, we're still doing a, a lot of vaccine here Monday through Friday here at the Health Center. And so we still have appointments open. So if anybody out there in the public wants to, wants to get an appointment, definitely get online and, or give us a call. And that's going to be available too when, when the younger population opens up. So we're, we're working to get out into the school districts. We've got slots open for us at our Health Center. And then we also have a lot of community partners. There's, there are a lot of opportunities. Like Gary said, are around the Health Center to get vaccine. So it's not just us. It's a whole local public health system taking, taking that on. And then we also just wanted to highlight the homebound with the EMS crew. And so continuing to do that. I know the numbers aren't super high, but for those homebound individuals, it's really, really important for, for them to get vaccinated. So administered 21 vaccines. I know that that has increased since this report was, was sent out, but just want to highlight all the, you know, the MOUs and the, the partnerships that we have in the community are continuing to flourish in that account. I think that was the last thing. Nope, nope. I wanted to highlight the dental program too. And so we're still getting out into the schools. Definitely had 10 elementary schools and two daycares received the oral health screenings and their first floor had varnish applications. So definitely seeing a lot of kids. I think the numbers, numbers are starting to creep up on, on that. And so really early in the school year still. But Michaela and Carmen get out there and do a great job and the, the schools really receive those services as well. And then the WIC program, oh, did want to mention our off-site clinics reopened. And so that's kind of getting, trying to get back to normal on that after being shut down for 18 months. So just want to highlight that and, and make sure that you all know that we're getting out into the community and kind of breaking down those barriers again for transportation and the WIC services, making that available. So that about does it for my report.
Any questions for Daryl?
Very good job.
All right, Gary, you're up.
All righty. Um, I've already covered most of the COVID in earlier discussions. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Yes.
So I want to bring your attention to the right side of the screen. We are now at 50% for the ages 12 and up for at least one dose. So that's a pretty significant jump for us in, in the last couple of weeks. That's good news. For the age group 65 and up, we're now at 73% of at least one dose. So those numbers are steadily climbing. They're, as I reported out in previous months, it's just a little bit slower now because we don't have the advantage of things like Operation Safe, the, the large mass vaccination clinics and but we are moving and trending in the right direction for sure on vaccinations and that, that's a really good thing. We're also seeing a significant trending down in the number of cases. So we're trending in the right direction as well in that area. And the cases are really showing a sustained decrease over the past four weeks, which is really good news. And the hospitalizations in Clay County are starting to decrease slightly. That's also good news. And we still are having a number of community outbreaks throughout our county, although that number has started to decrease as well. I would point out on the syndromic surveillance, I hope you will see this. Okay, can you all see this? Does your screen change?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can see here on the left, we're still in a high community transmission, unfortunately. So even though we're trending in the right direction, we're still in red and we are trending downward. So we hope that we can get a color change here pretty soon as, as soon as maybe next week or so. But we need to be down below 100 or more new cases for 100,000 and we're just not there yet. So we're still seeing pretty, pretty high community transmission in terms of the virus. So I, I wanted to bring that also to your attention. So in terms of COVID, that's all that I have to share on that subject. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. In terms of legislation, there isn't any, obviously they're not in session right now. So there's no report for legislative and I also want the board to know that there are now active construction sites both to the east and to the west of the Health Center. And so there are two 8,000 square foot retail commercial office space buildings going to the east of us. And then there's a, another large commercial space being built to the west of us on the other side of our parking lot. So that will mean that the industrial park will be, when those are completed, I believe that it will be, will be full. So we'll, we'll see an increased amount of traffic in the business park once, once those complete. And I think that's, that's going to do it for my report.
Anything else? Anything from any of the board members? All right, I need a motion to close at seven, or 6:49, sorry, I'm 7:49.
I move that we adjourn at 6:49 PM.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody. Have a good month.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Bye-bye.